Okay, I called order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 10th, 2019. Welcome. The first order of business is the approval of the June 12th, 2019 minutes. Does everybody read them over? Any corrections, additions, deletions? Do we have a motion to approve?
All those that we approved, minutes?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Nigh.
Nigh.
Alright. So the next order of business is the following, public hearing item. This is a petition of the 434 Center LLC at 2009 Enterprise Drive, 1001 and 1009 Dillard Drive to amend the future land use map from employment two to mixed use to rezone approximately 15 acres from I-2 Light Industrial District to B-3C Community Business District, conditional, and for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of commercial and multifamily buildings. Tom?
Yes ma'am. Members of the Planning Commission, the petition proposes to construct a development with a variety of different uses. The development would contain a 126,000 square foot building that would contain a gym and fitness center as well as a basketball gym and an event venue. Also proposed on the plan would be 116 apartment units, office, commercial retail space and as well as a restaurant and walking trails on right around 14.83 acres. The future land use map currently recommends an employment two use for this area. These areas are intended to include light and heavy manufacturing, development flex space, and large scale office uses. However, restaurant, hotel, and business uses are appropriate as size to function with the employment uses. The petition does request to amend the future land use map to a mixed use. Mixed use areas do not fit into any one land use category and generally consist of large undeveloped greenfield sites and they're intended to be developed with a balance of residential, commercial, civic, and open spaces. This proposed change to a mixed use in the opinion of the planning division staff would be an acceptable transition from the city-county boundary line, the industrial area, and to the Windhurst and Summit developments. And as noted in the planning commission report, we did speak with the economic development director and while the loss of industrially zoned land is always a reason to stop and think, the director had no negative opinions of changing this land use designation. Stormwater management would be proposed to be addressed with a stormwater management area right here. Currently it is an existing sediment basin that's proposed to be converted to a wet pond best management practice. Remaining requirements would be met with a combination of onsite BMPs and the purchase of offsite nutrient credits. Obviously, a development this size, the major impact would be that related to traffic. The petitioner did submit a traffic analysis and turn lane warrant study, which was reviewed by the city's traffic engineer. The study indicated that right and left turn lanes would be warranted on Enterprise Drive. The site plan indicates the right turn lane. The city is looking to prohibit left turns in off of Enterprise, which is why this entrance is being shown as right in and left, right in, right out. So there would be no left in from Enterprise to the development. While the study did not show any needed improvements on Dillard Drive, the city's engineer requested and the petitioner has proffered to widen Dillard Drive back to their entrance, essentially their property line to the east, so that a three lane configuration will be available all the way back in that area. I think that's probably going to result in a widening of pavement of about maybe four feet to get those three lanes in. So with that, the planning division does recommend approval of all three items, the future land use map amendment, the rezoning, and the conditional use permit.
Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? You know the drill. Sign in, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Andy Klepak. I'm with Hurt &amp; Profit here in Lynchburg. And as always, the planning department's synopsis is really thorough. The only thing I would highlight is that the gym and fitness center is intended to be the anchor for the development. And then the basketball gym and event venue is, it's anticipated that it's going to be of a great benefit to the community, to the city. It's something that could be used for trade shows as well as athletic events. We understand that there's a need for a place to host athletic events that just, there's a dearth of available space in the city. So Marjette was excited about, hearing about the possibility of that happening. The petitioner did send out notices to the surrounding neighbors and hosted a community meeting on Monday of this week. There was one attendee, I believe, at that meeting, so they made an effort to reach out to the neighbors to explain the project and answer any questions that came up. And as always, I'm happy to answer any technical questions. The developer is here as well if you have any very specific operational questions for the proposed development. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this petition?
In favor, I guess.
In favor. Anybody else to speak in favor? Yeah. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition, opposed to the petition? Please come for-
We just have some questions.
Please come forward.
Sure.
Please sign in if you don't mind. Thank you.
I'll just show you the map here. We own this adjoining property here and one we didn't receive a notice about a neighborhood meeting on Monday.
Okay, wait. Can you tell us your name?
Dave Webber.
Please, Dave Webber. And just sign in for me if you don't mind and sorry to interrupt you and then- Thank you, Mr. Webber. Ask your question again.
Okay. So anyway, we own this adjoining property here and we didn't receive a notice about anything on Monday, I think we probably would have attended. But I guess we just have some questions about the contouring for your rainwater runoff here. I mean, this map shows some detail here, but back some years ago, there were some issues with rainwater runoff and that lot was recontoured. So I think we want to understand how the rainwater flows are going to go. We don't certainly want to go into our property because we have enough issues with water during heavy rains here ourselves. The second concern that we have is with the proximity to the boundary here as far as security is concerned. Now fortunately, the apartment buildings, the proposed ones are far enough away, but we're a 24/6 operation, which means there's manufacturing there continuously during the night. So there's noises from manufacturing, toll motors and things like that. So we wouldn't want to have future complaints from residents because hey, you know, there's noise over there and we want it to go away. But we also have concern about the traffic here. Because I don't know how many of you have been there between 2:45 and 3:45. It's pretty bad there. You've got a major employer down here who basically has shift changed. So this entire road in both directions is congested. Now, we've changed our shift changes to accommodate for that, but you can't get a truck in or out down here because the traffic is just so bad. So I have a concern about this. First of all, people kind of shortcutting through here to get out onto Enterprise. But second of all, just about the general congestion that all this might add during those high points in the morning and the afternoon. So that's not necessarily negative against the idea, but I do think that somebody really needs to look at the traffic because it's really bad there. And we've had a couple instances where we've had to have an ambulance come out and be able to get into the property. And when the semis come down here, not only for our plant but for Virginia Candle with all the congestion, they can't make a swing because nobody will give them a break. So it just gets worse and everybody just sits there. So I'm not going to say we're, we don't agree with the plan. I just think that we have a couple concerns about what the traffic might be and where the rainwater might go.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't think we can answer that, but-
Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition, opposed to this petition? Would you like to answer some of those questions?
I guess I'll try to take them in order. The stormwater will be directed entirely to the stormwater management basin. We really have no choice per state and local regulations. We've got to treat anything we put on that, on that property. So in reality, the amount of water, if there's any currently running onto the adjoining property, it's all going to have to be diverted with the new grading scheme. As far as traffic, when we ran our traffic analysis, we did set up a little bit early and noted the shift change, especially with J.Crew down at the end of Dillard Drive. And that, I think one mitigating factor is that will be offset from the anticipated peak hours of operation for this development. It's anticipated that's going to be typically post 5:00 PM. People get off work and maybe go to the gym and that definitely coincides with the peak traffic on Enterprise. So we definitely recognize that there's an amount of traffic that comes in and out on Dillard at shift changes. I think what will help that is the fact that it's offset from the peak usage of the site and then also the turn lanes that are being proffered are an attempt to mitigate that as much as possible on our development. And also keeping in mind that whatever gets developed at this site is going to generate traffic. It's, you know, 15 acres that by right could be developed as an industrial use, which is going to generate its own volume of traffic regardless. So the petition is definitely aware of the traffic concerns and we feel like we made a good faith effort to address them.
So is your left-hand turn boundary, they're going to restrict left-hand turns from Dillard then to, or just into the development?
No, it'll be, we'll extend the left turn lane from Dillard onto Enterprise and then we'll also provide a left turn lane from Dillard into the development. So traffic can move freely up and down Dillard and people turning aren't going to be impacted.
Okay, because I mean, there still is a lot of traffic up at Enterprise that's making a left into Dillard at shift change there, well, during the day mostly, but especially during the shift change there.
Correct. Yes, we're not, that was something that was borne out in the traffic study. They analyzed the intersection and the effect of this development on the intersection and making sure that you maintain an acceptable level of service. That was all taken into account.
So is there any plan for any kind of green space or the natural barrier between the, at least this planned parking lot and the property line or?
We will have to by code provide parking lot screening from any, any public right-of-way. So that's the intent of the larger blob of green on the bottom of that parking lot, though the developer certainly wants to make this as aesthetically pleasing as possible. So I would say that an enhancement of that landscaping to fill those two triangles is not out of question at all.
So parking lots don't have setbacks?
Not in industrial district.
Okay.
So just to kind of summarize what was said, obviously, the city engineer was concerned about the traffic conditions on Dillard, which is a reason he requested, even though the study showed it wasn't necessarily needed, to widen Dillard all the way down to the entrance. And from my understanding, what happens at shift change is up at the very intersection of Enterprise and Dillard, you've kind of got that three lane configuration, but as you go back, the road narrows and you don't get as much stacking.
Well, some days they may get a three.
Well, what this will do is it'll actually widen the road and stripe it to allow for that three lane. So you'll have more stacking with people trying to get out.
Yeah, that might, and it's a late time, you might change that whole situation.
Now, in terms of the green space, while it's not necessarily required for them to put it in, the petitioner may want to do it really for their own protection because the use to the east has been there. They do act, obviously operate on a 24-hour basis and that's not going away. So they may want to look into putting some type of buffers in, which it seems are meanable to do so.
On that east side, is what you're saying?
Right, in the two little triangles, they may want to put some buffering in. They have a very large buffer to the northeast that's remaining. And then as Mr. Klepak stated, all the stormwater will have to be directed to that pond.
So at some point, will there be a contouring map developed for the runoff?
Oh, absolutely. This is a very conceptual plan. Before they actually get approved for construction, they'll have to submit very detailed drawings showing the pre-contours, how their plans development, which we have, the city has a staff person that does nothing but reviews erosion seven control and stormwater management plans and they ensure that they meet all the state codes. The other thing I'll point out is, you were notified about the meeting today, correct?
Yeah, I did get this.
Yeah. So the meeting that they did on Monday, I can't answer why you weren't notified. That was strictly by the petitioner.
Yeah, I'll bring that up in a little bit. Okay, I guess the public hearing is closed at this point and commissioners will address, address this and ask questions and, so what do you guys, do you all have any questions?
I have a question from Mr. Klepak. Just which neighbors did you invite? Was it all of Windhurst and who was invited?
We used the same address list that was used for the public communications that the city sent out, so all the surrounding properties. A little bit out lost to explain the mix-up with the neighbor there, but I'll go check our records.
But you sent it out in the mail?
In the mail.
How long ago?
Probably two or three weeks, three weeks ago.
Prior to Monday evening's meeting?
Well, it's a shame if Wexco didn't get it, but it, you know, that's an extra step that the petitioner's taken to, you know, to dial-wa with the neighborhood.
I was curious that the issue that was brought up with the noise, and I have not been over there at night to hear what kind of noise your manufacturer makes, but do you foresee that as an issue or have you been over there at night? I mean, do you think that that would be something that the residents in the apartments would have an issue with?
I can speak if that's okay.
Sure, please. Sure, come on up. What's your name?
Gary Sminkie, sir, at our developments.
And you're the developer?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I have no problem with the noise or anything. We've been there early, midday, at night. I'm sorry that you didn't get me the mail.
It's not really noisy, but I guess it's not dead quiet either. And having run businesses in residential areas, you kind of expect, hey, you know, that, there's some loud noise over there, well, it's the air compressor relieving itself or, you know, whatever.
Yes. We are understanding Hannah Waizdell, you know, we talked to them and talked to Piedmont in person. So we're definitely okay with that. We don't have an issue with any noise. And I haven't, I haven't seen anything from you guys that would-
No, we don't have any real air emissions or anything. It's just vibration and sometimes some audible noise from mobile equipment and trucks and things like that.
As expected when you're doing this. We're totally fine.
Yeah, I would be, I would be more concerned about the noise if this was reversed and the petitioners were the one producing the noise, not moving into a situation where the noise is already there.
Okay.
So, because if you're happy with it, then-
We're fine.
Then, and I appreciate the concern being expressed, but-
Although you are changing, they're, you know, asking to change the flume from an industrial area to mixed use where, you know what I mean? So there's-
Yes. But I don't consider, I mean, if this was a, if this was a request from residential to what they're asking for now-
Right.
-I would be immediately opposed to it.
Right.
And probably would not change my mind. Going from industrial to this is not radical and in my mind, we can end up with a better end product. You can make arguments about the traffic because industry's going to have different types of traffic patterns, but they're still going to have traffic. So to me, this is, this is not one of those controversial petitions that we're often dealing with.
At the end of the day, I see it as a plus for us as employer because one, we're always hiring new people and we're always looking for a place to live. And two, we're always looking for, we need a fitness facility for our employees, right? Because they can't get into the Y. So whoever decides to operate that, you'd be interesting to partner with as far as an employee.
And the gym and fitness center is open to the public, not just residents?
Yes, sir.
Like a franchise or individual or individually?
We own Kinetics Health Club as well right now.
Okay.
So we're just gonna, I'm sorry, we own Kinetics Health Club as well right now. So we're going to take it and just grow it and expand.
That's great.
Yes, we're, everybody's full right now. So we feel that that'll be a great need and-
That's great. And the basketball gym, like-
The basketball gym is, we're very excited about. It's, you know, it's four basketball courts is the size of it. So it duplicateses as-
Really? Four full-size basketball courts?
Yes, full, full size. And it duplicateses as eight volleyball courts. And volleyball's needed here as well with the travel teams, rec leagues. I grew up, my son grew up and I was coaching, so I saw it firsthand and the need for practice facilities and everybody's always traveling. We like for some of our home people to stay here and have some tournaments on weekends and things like that. So and just the venue in itself, being able to have trade shows, different types of activities like that. I know Marjette was very excited when we talked to her about it.
Yeah, that's great.
So we have a lot of great ideas that we want to use and that's, it's going to be a nice facility that we can take down from basketball to get it to a venue really fast and be able to serve the community. So we're excited about that.
I had a question about the resource conservation. So this, this property overlaps two different types of zoning categories, which is a little bit unusual, I think. So the-
Actual three.
Three, yeah.
I-2, I-2 conditional and RC. They're not infringing on the existing RC district.
Right. So on one of the zoning maps, it's labeled as RCC, which I guess is Resource Conservation Conditional? Right, that one right there.
Yeah, it was basically that that area would remain in a natural state.
Okay, so it's a little bit more protected than a typical RC.
It's a lot more protected because if you have a conservation area now, although the types of uses you could put on it are limited, you could go in and clear cut it. This has to remain disturbed.
Okay, good. And I think that's important because there is an R1 due north.
Oh, right.
And that is all, has houses if you look at, if you look at the actual area.
You'll have, you'll wait, okay? Jan, do you have anything to say?
No, like I said earlier, I don't, I don't see this either.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I think it's a great, exciting, you know, development and-
Well, if you, if you drive through this area, it fits there.
Right.
We're not changing the character of the neighborhood.
I agree.
As much as, you know, as much as you'd like to see industrial plants, I mean, that's sat there without an industrial facility being built, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, I think this is going to be a good use of a piece of property to sit in there vacant and very well could be a better use than if there were some industrial facility that was put in there.
I think it also makes a better transition from the industrial to the R1 to the north.
Sure, and into Windhurst too.
Yes, more of a transition.
I agree.
I do have some concerns. One, I don't like the concept that we're going to give up our limited industrial zones within the city. I like the concept of the health club and the basketball event venue. That's pretty neat and the restaurant office right there, that made sense there, but when we've got right there looking at, we're putting an apartment complex right in the middle of industrial complex, that doesn't mix logically in my head. Why do you want to put potentially 300 people inside an industrial complex and then have the potential additional 300 cars on that already busy Dillard Drive two or three times a day? And so I'm just trying to understand that logic, why we would want to create an apartment complex right there.
We were initially thinking that the people there being able to, you know, Hannah Waizdell came in the other night and said, well, that's a really big plus. Maybe some of our people can work there and walk to work. I can't remember the lady's name, but she came in. So we were looking at that too for feeding the gym, et cetera, and some of the other things that we're looking at inside. We just thought it was a good fit to have people close that we can bring into the gym and to the venue and other places and, you know, maybe places down the road that people may work. So that was, that was our concept with it.
And so that, what I'm hearing, the other businesses would like to have apartments that where they have their future employees living.
Right. A lot of the people living there will probably walk right across to workout and eat at the restaurant and things of that nature and other commercial businesses in there as well. So with a mixed use, we felt just kind of worked together in our mind.
The other thing that that was, again, just was gnawing at me, having retired from Northern Virginia and the, every couple of years, there's new people move in up there near Dulles Airport and start complaining about the noise of the airplanes. Okay, so here we have an apartment complex going into industrial thing, they buy into it. Next thing they know, well, I keep hearing this noise or the ground's always shaking at certain times of the day and, and all the traffic three times a day. I can't go to the grocery store and da-da-da-da-da-da-da and then they start complaining. It's like, well, excuse me, you're the one that chose to live in an apartment complex in the middle of industrial zone. And it's just, to me, it's just, we're begging for frustrations a few years from now.
Mark, what I see is that this northern, this is oriented to the north, pretty much north, I guess, that northern part of it is, is, you know, it backs up to a conservation area, it's wooded and to the northeast of that is all residential. So it is closer to the residential than it is to, well, it's a little bit closer to, where is it, Wexco? But it's across that big parking lot from Wexco, across their pond from Wexco. It's not-
Well, you've got other businesses right behind it.
Right, and they don't, they look rather-
They tend to be more professional and nature businesses.
In the county, just to the north of that, northwest of that, look, you know, they're not big industries, they're commercial establishments on Brook Park Place, but-
And my concern is because just going to a doctor's appointment right down the road there in mid-morning, I got rear-ended and that's without all this other stuff there. And so, and that's all the business industrial from the, the wall- And so, and that's all the business industrial from the Walgreens to there. That's all businesses. There's no R1 there. The R1 is the other side of Walgreens.
Well, is it a traffic problem or you don't think people would want to live there, probably?
Well, I'm just concerned about we're going to put a potential 300 additional cars back in there.
Well, what if you put a big factory that hired 500 people?
Well, that'd be a great, that'd be great if we had businesses come in hiring 500 people. I'd rather have 500 people working.
Yeah, but you talk about a traffic backlog, Mark. That's, that would coincide with the other industrial facilities. I think that's what, the point that was being made earlier was that the traffic that'll be there will not typically be coming in and out at the same time that the, that the current industrial facilities are having traffic come in and out.
I just don't feel apartment complex is the right fit to go right in there in the middle of industrial area. We've had this future land use map there, and if we saw a fit to put in apartment complex, make it R1, R2, R3, we probably should have done that. But we looked at the future use of the property there and our limited resources within the city to attract businesses. I don't think our vision was, well, let's plop in an apartment complex because we have some extra spare acreage.
Yeah, well, but nobody else picked it up as an industrial site either.
Well, very true.
I do like the, you know, the use of the conservation area as trails, walking trails, and, you know, that has to be preserved. I think it's nice to be able to have people living next to that. It really is so close to the rest of the residential, to the north and obviously Windhurst, to the southeast. I too had the same concern, though, you know, when we have something zoned industrial. But as Dave said, I, I don't have as much concern downzoning as I would, or upzoning? Which way are we going?
Depends on your perspective.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have as much concern going from commercial to residential as I would going from residential to commercial. But I think it's, you know, that is a, an area that people want to live in. They want to live in that forest area. And Windhurst has certainly been popular. This gets a lot more people there. I also like the traffic pattern. I mean, most of those people, unless they're going into Windhurst, are going to take a right turn out of there and go right directly to Dillard. If they're, if they want to take, I mean, excuse me, to Enterprise. If they want to go left on Enterprise, they're going to have to go out Dillard to get there. But I think that will take a lot of those people off of Dillard Drive, certainly going out. Coming in, if they're coming from Lynchburg, they're probably going to be coming down Enterprise onto Dillard and into their, they have to, into their parking lot. So, I think the traffic pattern will be better, certainly for those industries down the road on Dillard. And I think the time of day that these people are coming and going is not necessarily the same as those at the big factories. I don't know exactly what time...
Their slowest time at the gym facility we have right now is about 1:30 to about 4:30 in the day. So, when we were talking Hanawha, they were saying 7:07, I believe. You may know more than that about their shift changes and...
Well, we changed ours to like 6:00 to 2:00, 10:00, and G. Crew, I think, is 7:03 and 3:00.
So, that, it just, it works by air industry and the influx of people coming. They're really not coming at that time. It's when people get off work that they're coming in. And our events, you know, the basketball and the volleyball is there on the weekends. And their gym patterns are Monday nights are more crowded, and it decreases throughout the week. And we have our parking lot positioned that way on purpose for the ebbs and flows of parking and the events coming on the weekend. That's the slowest time at the gym, vice versa for the other.
Yeah, Mark, I appreciate your concerns, and I think the one about folks buying into these places and then later having complaints about noises, I think we're going to talk about that a little bit on our next item.
The gym, basketball court, I have no problem with. It's the apartment complex. I can't support this with the apartments there. I'm sorry. The gym, I think, is great. The event arena is fantastic. We need stuff like that, most definitely do. I just do not feel the apartments belong there. The other places, I mean, plenty of other places we can put apartments and they have no problems doing it, but not in the middle of industrial zoned area.
Any, any other comments? Does some, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the petition as it's drafted is being accepted.
Do we have three things to vote on?
Yeah, Tom, do we have to do those separately or can we do it as a group?
It'd be nice if you just did it separately.
Separately, okay. So, so I guess we'll talk about number one first, which would be the approval of the petition to amend the future land use map from employment to mixed use. Anyway, I'm like proposing. I shouldn't be. I'm just reading. What, does anybody want to make a motion for the number one?
Yeah, we're on page five of the...
Yes.
I'll make a motion on number one on the petition that it be accepted as drafted, as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any other comments, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, let's focus on number two.
I'll make a motion to, shoot, for the approval of the petition to rezone the 14 and 8300 acres as written.
Well, there'd be two additional proppers with that that we received in writing the day, which relates to the widening of Dillard and striping there.
Those are, there's a separate one...
They'll go with the proper.
Including those new proppers.
Yes, including these two proper.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Looking at number three.
I move that we recommend approval of the petition for conditional use permit.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
And then finally, number four.
Anything else?
I move to recommend approval of the petition to amend the future land use map. We did that? Well, there were four, there are four parts.
There's four things, four motions that you cited. So, one's from E2 to mixed use, and then this one is...
Oh, that shouldn't be there.
Yeah, this looks like it's a duplicate.
So, it's duplicate?
It is a duplicate.
All right.
Okay, so I guess...
I withdraw my motion.
We've approved all three recommended motions, and good luck. So, we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is some old business. We last meeting discussed the complaint, the public complaint with the smoker. And Tom recommended that we invite the city attorney to come speak to us about public and private nuances. And I believe he's here and would love for you to come up and speak with us. Thank you so much for coming. I know it. We've never officially met. I've talked to you on the phone a handful of times.
Nice to meet in person.
Nice. I'm Kenzie. Nice to see you. So, take it away.
Okay, well, you know, there are two types of nuisances, public nuisances and private nuisances. A public nuisance is a condition that poses a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. A private nuisance is a nuisance that impacts a relatively small number of people. The city is given the authority under state law to eliminate public nuisances for the protection of the community. Property owners, citizens, have the right to address private nuisances. The city doesn't have the authority to deal with a private nuisance. That is really a dispute between two private property owners, and the city, you know, shouldn't be taking sides in that type of dispute. The example I typically give is something that happens several times a year. We'll get a call from someone complaining about a tree. So, if I have a tree in my front yard and the tree's in bad shape, and it could fall over and hit a citizen walking down the sidewalk, or if it could hit a citizen using, driving on the streets, or if it obstructs a public intersection, then that is a public nuisance. It threatens the public in general, and the city has the authority to step in and deal with that. On the other hand, if that same tree is in my backyard and if it falls over, the only person it's going to hit is one of the two adjoining property owners, that is a private nuisance. It doesn't affect the public as a whole. It has a small impact. And the private property owners, under Virginia law, have the right to deal with that nuisance, to take the necessary steps to have it remediated. The difficulty you have with, with public or private nuisance is, is citizens never want to be the ones to have to deal with it. They say, "Well, gosh, if I complain to my neighbor about the tree, then the neighbor's going to be upset with me." Or, "Gosh, my neighbor won't listen, and if I have to go to court, I'll have to spend the time and expense of possibly hiring an attorney." So, even though citizens have a remedy to deal with private nuisances, they're often reluctant to do so for, you know, for one reason or another. So, we do get these calls fairly frequently. We have to tell people, "Well, gosh, while being a citizen gives you certain rights and privileges, it also gives you certain responsibilities." And sometimes, if you're dealing with annoying condition, it's your responsibility to take the action to remediate it. The city doesn't have the authority or the responsibility, you know, to deal with every, you know, complaint. And particularly in the area of a, you know, a private, something that's, you know, a private nuisance only disturbs a relatively small number, you know, of individuals.
Do we have a smoke law, a law about...
You know, we do not. We have a noise ordinance when you discussed your last zoning request. We do have a noise ordinance that sets decibel levels, and so if the, that we do enforce. But we don't have anything to, like, enforce smoke. I don't know that there are any, you know, standards, you know, for that as to how you would measure that for noise. You use decibel meters. Some localities, Lynchburg doesn't have one yet, you know, have light ordinances, what they call dark sky ordinances. It place limits on the amount of light that can be generated from adjoining properties, and you would use light meters to measure that. Now, there may be something that can measure smoke levels, but, you know, I haven't, haven't ever heard of it.
What about, isn't there like a particular day you're allowed to burn brush?
We usually don't have that specifically in the city. What we do is we do have an open burning ordinance that limits the, what can be burned. You can't burn garbage and refuse. You can only burn lawn trimmings and things like that. But it doesn't, we do get complaints a lot of times from people that have these, that become very popular, chameaus, you know, fire pits. We do get calls from citizens saying, "Gosh, my neighbor's got a fire pit and they're always out there, and I don't like the smoke." Those are perfectly legal. And there's nothing, the air pollution control laws, you know, don't apply unless you're burning inappropriate substances in it. So, a smoker, the ones that you showed, it's a perfectly legal item. Unless you are burning something inappropriate in it, the smoke that would be generated by that, I don't believe would violate any air pollution control laws. If they were, they wouldn't be the city's air pollution control laws. They would be the state's air pollution control laws.
So, this might be an urban legend, but I always thought that if I didn't mow my yard, eventually the city would mow it and send me the bill. And send me the bill.
We're going to get them to do my yard.
Yeah, and it would not be cheap.
Well, they do. They do.
Yeah, that is, it's a possibility. The state law allows the city to have a weed ordinance. It says if your grass and your noxious weeds in your yard get to a height of 12 inches, the city can send you notice and then come in and cut them and bill you for the cost. Again, that's because there's a state law that specifically authorizes localities to adopt, you know, that type of ordinance.
So, the news this morning had a story about unsightly trees and vegetation, but what you just described would not cover that?
You know, these are a lot of interesting issues. Yes, I'm afraid that is an issue that's going to come up, that we're going to be addressed in the next couple of weeks as a result of the presentation at last night's council meeting. The city's weed ordinance specifically excludes trees, shrubbery, flowers, and vegetables. So, in the piece of property that the citizens came in and spoke about next week, last night, excuse me, you could possibly use the weed ordinance to go in and cut the grass and weeds if it's reached 12 inches in height. You couldn't use the weed ordinance to cut down the trees, the shrubs, flowers, that type of thing. And then that gets into the next issue of that that will have to be addressed as a result of the presentation. There's a difference between a nuisance, you know, in an eyesore. A nuisance, again, is a condition that has an adverse effect on the health, safety, welfare of the community. We saw an unsanitary condition, a dangerous condition. We have the authority to remedy those conditions. An eyesore is something that doesn't pose any type of threat to health, safety. It just looks tacky. Nothing upsets people more than having the neighbor in the neighborhood that lets their house look tacky. They painted a weird color. They put up tons of Christmas lights. They, and in this particular case, they don't cut the weeds and the shrubs. Virginia law is pretty clear. There are court cases, there are attorney generals' opinions that say, you know, the local government can't use its police powers to regulate aesthetics. You know, I may, I can let my, I can be a terrible neighbor. The city doesn't have the authority to force people to be good neighbors. You know, I can be the one neighbor on the block that lets my bushes and trees grow up, paints my house a tacky color that everybody else hates, and that's my right as a property.
But not, but not the grass?
Not the grass. The grass...
It's just interesting that they would, they would allow policing power over the grass.
Grass and weeds.
That just is not unsightly, but, you know, for a neighbor that's, that has, you know, meat, smoke coming into their, you know what I mean? And I, I don't know how we, I don't, I'm not suggesting that we change it or come up with something, but...
Here's an example. Years ago, I'm still surprised that, well, I'm always somewhat concerned whenever I go over into Madison Heights and go to the Silver Pig. Because years ago, before they relocated in Madison Heights, they were in Lynchburg. They were down 12th Street, and they were set up there. And they had their smoker, you know, on their property. And one time, their chimney, the smoke stack on their smoker fell over, and the smoke was permeating the entire neighborhood. It was getting in people's homes. It was getting in people's laundry when they would hang it out on the line. And, you know, I had to send the Silver Pig a notice saying, "You're operating a public nuisance, and if you don't do something about it, the city will step in." But while there is no definite number, that was impacting more than just one or two... But while there is no definite number, that was impacting more than just one or two adjacent property owners.
So how many?
It was impacting, there isn't a magic number.
Right.
That says, when you get to this point, it stops being a private nuisance, three or four people, and then becomes a public nuisance. It's kind of something you have to use judgment on. In that case, because the winds, particularly when it was windy, would blow the smoke all out, throughout that part of the community, the community said, "This, we believe, has gotten to the point, it is a public nuisance." And they did, you know, deal with it. They repaired the smoke stack, the chimney on their smoker, and that eliminated the problem. This one is pretty clearly, from what you've shown, that there's not widespread complaints. This is pretty much a private nuisance. But the person who's being adversely impacted by it certainly has the right to take the appropriate action to deal with it. I don't think there's any question that if the citizen would say, "I'm going to exercise my right to try to put a stop to this," they would be successful. For example, if I decide as a hobby, I want to build furniture in my backyard, and I blow sawdust all over my neighbor's property, that is a public nuisance. Excuse me, a private nuisance. A private nuisance is really anytime something from my property passes over my property line onto my neighbor's property line, and makes my neighbor's use, impacts my neighbor's use of his property. It can be dust, smoke, smells, noise. Any of those things fall within the classic definition of a nuisance. And then you have to say, "Okay, this is clearly something that is capable of being a nuisance. It's crossing the property line, it's impacting other people." Then you have to measure, well, okay, is it a public nuisance or a private nuisance? How many people is it impacting? How many people does it have the potential to impact? If it's a significant number of people, and that's not a set number, then it's a public nuisance. If it's a relatively small number of people, then it's a private nuisance. The city doesn't have the authority to deal with it, but the property owner who's being negatively impacted by it, you know, does.
Right.
And then that kind of ties into the question that came up about eyesores. For an eyesore, you know, nothing is leaving my property to annoy my neighbors. My neighbors just don't like looking at it.
Right.
And we live in a society in which, you know, I do have an obligation not to use my property in a manner where stuff leaves my property, dust, noise, sound, smells, and impacts my neighbor. But, you know, I don't have an obligation to maintain my property in a manner just because, you know, my neighbors don't want to live next to an eyesore. Again, you know, I have the right to be a terrible neighbor and let my property look awful, as long as I don't do any of those other things.
What about the leaves that blew from one yard to the other?
You know, I have...
Out of curiosity.
I have never heard, you know, if I deliberately, with my leaf blower, go out and blow my leaves onto my neighbor's property, then I'm, probably might be guilty of trespassing. On the other hand, if the leaves just fall off my trees and the wind blows them over there, then that's just a force of nature. It's kind of like stormwater. If stormwater, if, you know, our property should be shaped so that the rain falls onto my property, then runs onto my neighbor's property, I don't have any obligation to try to make changes to my property to keep the rainwater from flowing. It's a natural occurrence. Leaves falling off of trees, being blown are natural occurrences. I've never heard any obligation that I'm aware of to deal with that. But, you know, I did mention, there is a Virginia Supreme Court case from a couple of years where, a tree case, where the tree was growing close to the property line, the roots were extending over onto the neighbor's property and pushing up the driveway. It was a sweet gum tree that has those sticky balls on it. They were falling over onto the neighbor's property, clogging up the gutters and causing problems. And the Virginia Supreme Court, that was actually the case in which the Virginia Supreme Court said, "That is a nuisance, and the neighbor that's being negatively impacted by the tree has the right to seek redress and force the owner of the tree, you know, to do something, you know, about it." So I've never seen anything about leaves, but I guess that is, you know, a possibility.
I'd like to follow up another question you mentioned in the answer. Water flow. Suppose the neighbor that puts in a new driveway with additional parking spaces that causes rainwater to now divert and then come over two lots, is that a natural thing?
You know, in Virginia, I am allowed to develop my property, and the fact that when I develop my property, that may result in additional stormwater flowing onto my neighbor's property is, as a general rule, probably isn't a violation of stormwater laws. You know, if I do something like build a channel and direct, specifically direct the water to my neighbor's property, that is a problem. But simply paving my driveway so it's paved instead of pervious surface in the gravel where the water would seep in, that is usually not enough to make me responsible. Virginia says that is just, you know, a fact of life, as people develop their properties, you know, we, you know, some of that is going to be expected, and we don't require, you know, that nobody can do something to their property just because it might result in additional stormwater flowing onto their neighbor's property. Now, we do have a stormwater ordinance and, based on state regulations, and once you're, what you do to your property gets to be a certain level, then you do have to make accommodations to deal with the stormwater.
So if I can get a kayak in the stream in my backyard, is that acceptable level? I'm serious. We had that six inches of rain?
Yeah.
Okay. From two houses away, I could kayak my backyard.
And we do get a lot of complaints about that. Lynchburg is so hilly.
Yeah, for sure.
And in recent years, we've had a lot of pieces of properties that weren't developed, that were low-lying properties, that now, because of, you know, running out of space, people have developed them. And suddenly, you've got people who've built homes on low-lying lots, and they're getting all the stormwater from their neighbors.
I wasn't one low-life thing. I'm one high.
You're in a high land.
Well, we, thank you so much. Did you want to make a comment?
Can I speak to what you said?
Add another question.
Well, you can, you can, I'm not going to cut you off. I was just going to let everybody speak. You want to go ahead first?
You go ahead.
I'm the person that has complained about the smoker they just showed.
Right.
My name is George Erbacher. And he spoke about the silver pig, he meant a lot of smoke, getting in neighbor's homes and their clothes when they hang them outside. That's exactly what has happened to me, that smoker.
Right.
It penetrates every room in my house. When it goes, we can't hang things outside. You don't even want to go outside. And he speaks about the number of people to make a public nuisance versus private. In this neighborhood, there are about 14 households. So each neighborhood, or a lot of neighborhoods, only comprise of a limited number of households. So how many residents in that neighborhood would have to complain for it to be a public nuisance? Since it's only a small number to begin with, you know?
And again, all I can say is there is no set number. It's not like five people, or six people, or a dozen people. It is a matter of judgment. But again, this is a situation, I'm not certainly questioning the impact it's having on you, but I think you have a remedy. But it's your remedy as the neighbor, or any other neighbors who say, "We're being impacted by this as well," you have the right to deal with it. It's just, I know from experience, that most property owners say, "Well, I don't want to be the one to have to do that. I don't want to have to be the one to go to court and ask the court to enter an order directing my neighbor to stop this, because, one, the expense, two, I don't want my neighbor to be upset with me." But you do have a remedy. You're not being left without a remedy. There is one available. It's just one that you would exercise as the person who's being negatively impacted by it, instead of asking the city to come in and say, "Well, city, you should deal with this." And again, I can't give you a precise figure of when something, the number of people that are impacted, it crosses the line and becomes a public nuisance versus a private nuisance. Each case is kind of unique, and you have to consider the facts and the number of people who file complaints, and what the situation actually is.
And you mentioned eyesore. You saw the picture of that smoker.
Yeah.
It is certainly an eyesore. So that's been one of my complaints.
Well, I would have to say, as an eyesore, complaining about it being an eyesore, you know, that's, you're just out of luck on that, because Virginia law doesn't recognize eyesores as a nuisance. Again, I can put something tacky in my backyard, as long as it doesn't create an unhealthy condition, unsafe condition, an unsanitary condition. The fact that it just looks ugly, city can't do anything about that, and probably you, as the person who has to look out of your window, can't do anything about it. I'm not aware of any court cases where the Virginia courts have ever said that simply an eyesore, something that just looks unattractive, rises to the level, you know, of a nuisance. Again, I don't have an obligation to maintain my property in an orderly condition just to please my neighbors. I can be a rotten person and let it look tacky and upset everybody in the neighborhood. In our country, that's just a right, maybe it's not a good right, but it is a right that we have.
So what, the city does have an ordinance on is the parking of the trailers in the front yard, and that smoker is on the, on a trailer. And I believe the zoning administrator's been out there and talked to that owner on several occasions. I believe this has been going on for, what, seven years? At least seven years, and staff has been out there numerous times and told Mr. Erbacher that this doesn't rise to the level of a public nuisance. And quite frankly, they finally said, "Just go and see if you can get the zoning ordinance changed." That's why Mr. Erbacher has come to you, asking you to put in place some type of an ordinance. You know, his question was, "Well, when does it rise to the level of a public nuisance?" And the city attorney has told you, you know, there's no set number, but it's most definitely more than one.
Right.
And we haven't had any other complaints, and I believe at your last meeting, there was discussion about how there had been no one else willing to file a complaint. So based on our understanding of the situation, and based on what the city attorney has discussed with staff and you, we are not recommending that you go down the line of initiating a zoning amendment, because it will go into other things such as we discussed, as wood stoves and so on and so forth. So as Mr. Irwin has stated, Mr. Erbacher's remedy is to go file a civil complaint against his neighbor as a private nuisance and take care of it that way.
Another aspect is that the fire hazard, regulations should be put in place to make it have at least 50 feet off any combustible items like houses, cars, garages, trees, and so forth.
You know, and we do have a fire code. It's the uniform statewide fire code. It's adopted by the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. It sets statewide standards. The city isn't allowed to amend the fire code to be different than the state code. They want it to be uniform throughout Virginia, so all localities are enforcing the same code. Certainly, if the fire marshal goes out there and believes this is a fire hazard, you know, then the fire, and it's being set up in violation of the fire code, the fire marshal can take, you know, appropriate action. We'll say that we, the fire marshal does get a number of complaints about the chameaus, the fire pits, and when he does go out there, but as a general rule, he finds that those types of things, you know, don't constitute, you know, fire hazards, as long as they're right, not right next up buddy now on the structure, as long as you're not burning inappropriate, you know, materials, as long as it's not setting next to your shed full of gasoline. Usually, you know, there aren't, again, it's certainly something that you can ask the fire marshal to go out, and the fire marshal will do it, and the fire marshal will check it, to determine if the fire marshal believes it violates the provisions of the fire code and is a fire hazard. And if the fire marshal thinks it is, the fire marshal can certainly has the authority to do something about that.
Refresh us, have you done, have you had the fire marshal out there?
Yeah, they came out, in the beginning, he had it 10, less than 10 feet off my property line. The fire code says it has to be 10 feet off. So that's not much of a change. They moved it 10 feet off. And then they, they came out and looked at it one time, but it was like five feet off this person's porch. The fire marshal didn't say anything about that. The trailer was five feet from the front porch.
Yes, the fire marshal, the zoning administrator, and property maintenance people have been out here, have been out there several times over the past seven years. Unfortunately, Mr. Erbacher's not getting the remedy that he wishes from the city, and that's because it does not rise to the level of a public nuisance, it's a private nuisance.
Nancy, did you have a question?
I don't really need to ask it, that's all right. I don't need to take up all our time.
Okay.
Ask you later.
It sounds like civil actions only, if it can't be resolved, that's probably the only option.
I, that's what I'm hearing from Tom and everyone, and we're terribly sorry about your situation. I feel for you and feel for your family and, but, you know, I guess, you know, I think consensus is that we're not able to change a zoning, or we're not, in a place to change the zoning to limit smoke.
I like the regulation states he can have the trailer in the front yard for eight consecutive days, and then it becomes a violation.
If the trailer's in the front yard, I encourage you to contact Mr. Henry, the zoning administrator. And Mr. Henry can go out and make him move the trailer to the rear yard.
What happens to the front of the house, on the road?
It's in the road, it's with the police department.
Yeah, they keep it there, too. That's a violation.
Now, if he pulls the smoker off the trailer and sets it in the front yard, there's nothing we can do about it.
Now, there is, since we're getting on these issues, right now, the city doesn't have an ordinance that regulates the parking of trailers on a public street. This has come up a lot in recent years, since you have so many people, like landscaping services and stuff, that park their vehicles on the public streets. The city has not adopted, at this time, an ordinance that regulates that. What we do have is general provisions in the city code that say, "You can't park something on the street that would create a safety hazard, you know, for vehicles." So if you're on a very narrow street and you've parked a wide trailer there, the police department could certainly go out and look at it and say, "We believe this constitutes a safety hazard because of the narrowness of the street or unusual conditions of the street, and it has to be removed." Again, but right now, we don't have anything that specifically regulates the parking of trailers on public streets. Now, citizens call up and say, "Well, we should, and maybe we should," and what we explain to the citizens is, "Then you have the right to contact, you know, the members of city council and say, you know, parking of trailers on streets, particularly in residential neighborhoods, is a distraction, it's inconsistent with the residential nature, and county, city council, you need to adopt an ordinance regulating that." And I believe city council could do that if they wish to. So far, that is not real, that isn't an issue that's ever been brought before city council, and they have been asked to consider such an ordinance, but they certainly could. But right now, unless you're creating some type of traffic hazard, you can park your trailer on a public street without violating any city code.
I guess it's just a discussion, right? So if there's nothing else?
Well, thanks for listening.
And for sure.
It's nice to be here. If any of you will have any questions, if you'd like to give me a call, follow up, please, please do so.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, our next meeting is Wednesday, July 24th. And if there is no other business, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn? And if there is no other business, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn? Second?
I have one other thing to say.
Oh, gosh, what? Sorry.
It's just, I had something written down from probably three months ago for Robin, who's not here anymore, but I wondered if we could streamline the sign-in process at all. Of course, today it didn't matter, and usually it doesn't matter when you've just got two or three people, but when you have 20 or 30 people lined up to speak, and it takes people, 20 or 30 seconds to sign in sometimes, some people write slowly, and that, that adds 10 minutes to the meeting. And I just wondered if there's any way we can get people to sign up before they get up here or something.
I think if it's a large number of people, we could very well circulate the sign-in sheet.
Yeah, that, that's, that's all.
Do you assign up juniors?
I know, right. Or you could almost have like a little computer that, you know, you come in and sign up and stand in line when you want to speak.
Where are lots of people get that for?
Yeah.
Well, and there was discussion, too, about having a better timing setup for this room.
I did find something, which is kind of really like a toy.
You hit the button.
Oh, funny.
Like a chess tournament.
It's kind of useful.
Oh, funny.
You have a kitchen timer.
Yeah.
Timer.
It's really for kids.
Right.
That's perfect for us.
Might add a little excitement to the meeting, you know?
Yeah.
All right, well, I guess we're adjourned, if y'all--
All right. Good job, Nancy, first meeting.